Hi, my name is Dave McCray and I'd like to welcome you to the premiere edition of Meet Your Town Council Candidates. This is a weekly show we're gonna be doing between now and the election. And it's gonna be a little bit different than some of the political shows you're gonna be watching. In that we're gonna have the candidates, but we're gonna keep politics out of it. What we're looking for is to bring the candidates forward and have you meet them. Almost kinda like a take on the old up close and personal ABC Wide World, the Sports Olympic Show. So, we're not gonna be asking people what they think, what their political views are. We'll leave that to someone else, but we want you to get a feel for the individual, what their likes are, a little bit about their family, and just get to know them. Today, I'm very happy to be joined by Mr. Shay Kevin. And he's gonna spend the next thirty to forty-five minutes letting us meet him. So Kevin, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here.
Thanks for having me. I'm excited to be on the show.
Alright, well, as I mentioned before, it's been about four years since I've been on TV, so we'll see how this goes. But well, eventually, I'm sure we'll get it.
Certainly.
Okay, I guess we'll start off with Kevin with, where did you grow up?
I grew up right here in Merrimack, on South Merrimack, right off Natticook Road, and my mom still lives over there.
Okay, and did you go to Merrimack High School?
I did. I went to, started, well, started school in Thornton's Ferry. And came over to Master Cola Middle School, and then I went to the high school here and graduated in nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, and do you have any anecdotes experiences? Or how do you feel Merrimack was as a town to grow up as a young guy? So you grew up in the eighties for the most part, would be fair to say?
That's fair to say, absolutely. Yeah, you know, Merrimack, I love Merrimack, and that's what brought me back. Grew up here and spent some time here even after high school. Moved up into Manchester for a few years and I traveled a little bit. But when I, when I met my wife and decided it was time to put roots down
Yeah.
and buy a home and start our family, Merrimack was the first choice. And so we found a property that needed some work. But it was, it's where we honored to be. We liked it, and so that's why we came back.
Great. And I'd like to talk a little bit more about the growing up phase. As far as during the summers, you know, how'd you spend your summers? Were you a kid on the baseball diamond? Were you out playing your guitar? You know, what were you doing back then, summers and during your free time?
Summers was a lot of fun. I spent a lot of time on my bicycle. And I had a bicycle. I was always tearing up the streets and going down Penetrach Square. There was a, I believe there's still a little convenience store there. It's a little different now. There used to be a convenience store, and then Friendly's was down there. So, you know, the friends and I would go down and take our bikes out. We'd ride around the neighborhood. I'd build forts. Summer was just a great time to be outdoors, enjoy the neighborhood. I had a good number of other kids and friends on my street, right in that little area where I grew up, so it was a really good time.
Did you ever go to Wildcat Falls?
Yeah, a few times, yeah.
Yeah, that seems like there'd be a place that all the kids that grew up here hit at least once.
Yeah, I've been there a small handful of times.
As far as your parents, what kind of values did they help instill in you that you feel has helped make you the man you are today?
My parents were, they had two different perspectives on values. They were divorced while I was young, and that's probably, you know, a lot of them part due to some of their differences in values. But both of them equally is important. So let me start with, first, let me start with my father. My father's values were follow your dreams, live for your dreams, do, go with what your heart is, and just do what you wanna do. And the rest will fall into place. And my mother instilled the values of, you know, dreams were nice, but dreams don't always pay the bills. So she put the stability factor in, and the financial, and the fact that, you know, you need something more secure and more stable. So I was able to take what both of those, what both of them gave me and merge them together. And I have a lot of fun, and I've managed to do it with some security behind me as well.
Yeah, nice balance, really. Yeah, it's tough if one's all one way or one's all the other.
If you can do, if you can do what you wanna do and follow your dreams and find a way to give it financial security and just stability, that's the way to, that's the way to go.
What kind of student were you? And what were your favorite subjects?
This is gonna depend on which teacher you're asking. You know, I'll tell ya, I didn't really, I didn't really like school until I realized that I was doing really good at it. I can remember in sixth grade, I remember coming home and crying to my mother about math class. I didn't like it, gave me a hard time, and so my mother, you know, met with a teacher and tried to figure out where things were at. And when she came home and she said, you know, Kevin, you're in the highest math program that's offered at your level right now. You're good at it. I didn't know that. Nobody told me that. I just knew I was assigned to this class and this is what I was doing. So once I realized that I was good at it, I liked it. English was never one of my strong points. In fact, yeah, English, English was one of those ones, if I would rather, I'd rather get the movie if possible, you know, than read the book. But, but other than that, overall, I loved, you know, chemistry and such, and I had a really good relationship with our chemistry teacher. So, you know, I think overall, I was a good student and a likable student.
Oh, good. And as far as high school activities, did you play any sports? Were you in the band? How'd you make the days go by when you weren't sitting in the classroom?
During my high school years, I had started my own magic show. And I started by doing children's parties, fundraisers, events. We actually sold out the little theater at Merrimack High School for the Lioness Club fundraiser.
When you were in high school?
When I was in high school. We did that, and so that took up a lot of my time. I also, you know, in school, in school programs, I didn't do any sports in school. I did marketing and we had the DECA program at the time, so I spent some time with them and traveling and doing DECA competitions. But, but most of my time outside of school was spent developing a magic show.
And is that something you still fiddle with today, or is that kind of in the bottom drawer?
So I do still fiddle with it. What happened was I developed a very large-scale show. I developed a Vegas-style act.
And again, you were sixteen years old when you were doing that?
Yeah, I was on the front page of several newspapers in my sixteen-year-old times, and I still have those somewhere in the shed. So I had a good act, and I remember one of the headlines was, was Teens Magic Is Way Beyond Kid Stuff. I love that headline.
Yeah.
So, so that was kinda cool. And so I still have that, but I developed a show relatively quickly. I wasn't, you know, as one person hired me and they said, wow, we expected you in your card show, your card table. You know, at this, I know, I had a twenty-four-foot box truck that I would have to rent to do these shows. And so I developed that rather quickly, and then, but I didn't wanna leave New Hampshire. I had grown to such a scale that for me to pick up and move and try to make this career happen somewhere else was a real financial gamble. And that's where the sensibility came in, over the, over the follow your dreams, and I said, it's time to get real.
Now, do you still have some of the props in there?
A lot of the large-scale items I did sell. I do still have a lot of the small things.
And you still have the ability.
And I still have the ability. In fact, Miss New Hampshire, I was asked to do something for Miss New Hampshire several years ago. And they've asked me to come back this year. Now, years ago, I was still performing. I had something to promote, and I was the onstage illusionist at the show. This year, they've asked me to come back. I'm not actively performing. I don't have anything to promote in that aspect, so I'm gonna design all the magic. I'm gonna make Miss New Hampshire appear in several of the other acts. In addition, I do, if anybody's familiar with The Nutcracker Suite Ballet, there's a, there's a character called Drosselmeier. And he's kind of a wacky, kooky magician. And when I first started, when I first met my wife, she danced for a studio. And they had a Drosselmeier, and the second year that we were dating, they asked me to play Drosselmeier. And I redesigned all the magic in the show, and we still do that to this day. Just, you know, this was, I think last year was my seventh season working with the Nutcracker. And designing magic and actually making the dolls and girls appear onstage, so.
Well, once we're done this show, you're probably gonna wanna mark September thirtieth down on your calendar. That's the sixteenth-year-old mayor of Merrimack Fall Festival Business Expo.
Okay.
And I always wanted a magician, especially one I didn't have to pay for, that was gonna volunteer out of the goodness of his heart. And this, this whole, this whole idea of interviewing the candidates has paid off within the first ten minutes.
Funny how things fall into place.
Yeah, you never know who you're gonna walk into.
I'll be just returning from Disney World at the time.
Oh, good, then you'll be into the whole entertainment thing.
I'll bring Mickey back.
Bring Mickey back. Okay, next one's gonna be tough. It's always tough to single out one thing. And it can be a group of things per se, but what's your fondest memories growing up? When you look back, what just puts a smile that you hope your kids will also be able to enjoy those type of memories?
Well, growing up in, where we grew up in Merrimack, it was just a really nice, quiet neighborhood. We had some woods behind the house. And, you know, I was fortunate, because I think what happened when I was younger, and I don't remember this exactly happening, but at one point, they had taken down the deck and put it some sort of a three-season porch in. So that lumber that was left over was just kind of underneath, and I used to just snag that up and take it out in the woods and build forts. And I was, I get bored easy with the fort, and I'd take it down and I'd build a new one. So I, anybody in my neighborhood would know Kevin and his forts that he had.
Really, huh?
I had them all over the place. I had some smaller ones that just went higher, and I had bigger ones that went lower, so I love building forts.
Yeah, that's, growing up, that's one thing I had one year with some friends, a tree fort, and it was, tell you, that's kind of something every kid ought to have.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Alright, well, we kinda, we got your younger days behind us now, and now we're moving up. And I guess we're gonna start with, how'd you meet your wife?
This is a good story. This is an interesting story. I mentioned the pageants, Miss New Hampshire program. In two thousand and three, I was asked by one of our, one of the local residents, Belinda Bridgman.
Now, two thousand and three, so we're going back ten years.
We're going back almost, yeah, almost ten years. She was the choreographer and producer of the program at the time. And she had just seen an article about me in the paper. And got this great idea to have magic in the Miss New Hampshire pageant, so they had hired me, actually, they had asked me to do it. It was a volunteer, it was a volunteer issue there. And so I volunteered to go and design some magic, and I made...
So you were a young single guy getting to, to, to have, have enough with the, with the magic candidates. Hey, you know, dummy.
And my mother actually worked backstage at the program, and she's off trying to get me sold off.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, this, so I made the current Miss New Hampshire appear onstage as well as, at that time, there were seventeen contestants. So I made all seventeen contestants appear onstage, and I was there throughout a series of rehearsals. And my wife, at the time, she, I hadn't even known her. There was a song that I heard on the, on the speaker system when I was out back, and I had to come out. It was Cotton Eye Joe. And, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with the song.
Oh, I love that show. They play them at the minor league games a lot.
So I hear this, and I go out, and there's this beautiful girl in this unitard that, with this long curly hair and these beautiful brown eyes, and she's got this little cowboy hat sparkles on, and she's doing this ballet on point to Cotton Eye Joe, and I couldn't believe it. I'm like, I gotta talk to this girl. And so I, you know, did whatever, what I thought I could do was, hey, you know, you know, I have this magic show, maybe you could... And so, so nothing, we didn't hook up at the time, and a few months later...
So you weren't smart enough to realize she's out of your league?
Well, no, I saw it.
That's always a good trait to have.
I would not accept that. So, yeah, so a few months later, I was, you know, I still, I'd met these girls and I had some connections. And they do volunteering at Gillette Stadium for the, for the games. And you volunteer in the concession stand and raises money for the program. And so I said, you know what? I got nothing to lose. I've got time. I, you know, I'm gonna go down and volunteer. And she was working one of those things, and I just, you know, kept flirting and I did something right. So that's how we met. We started dating, and then, you know, we just, we got involved with a lot of things together. You know, shortly after we started dating, the Manchester Wolves Arena Football came to town, and she was on the dance team, and I was the mascot. And so, you know, that just kind of carried us. We always were involved in some kind of a large-scale venue together.
Okay, so you meet a good-looking woman, fun, nice, wonderful. You're dating her. When the one day does it hit ya? This is the one.
Well, those that know me from growing up and, you know, I'm not really shy about telling. I wasn't the kind of guy that set out to get married and have a family. I didn't want any of that growing up. If you had asked me that ten years ago, I would've said, you're out of your mind. It's just the furthest thing from my mind. I didn't want it. And, you know, I just realized one day that this, this, there's something about, you know, the way that, not so much how you feel about somebody, but how somebody makes you feel when they're with you, and the way that she loved me, and this was just my, I just knew I couldn't do anything else. I couldn't go another way. So, in fact, now, this is another, an interesting story. So when I did know, I took advantage of my position with the Manchester Wolves. And I had asked the general manager, I said, this is my idea. I wanna propose to my girlfriend at halftime on the field.
So just, you were blitzed. I mean, a lot of people, a lot of people watched, so I mean, let's say, you were blitzed.
That's right. So I actually, and I said, you know, here's what I wanna do. I don't have a lot of money. I wanna, can I, can I sell sponsorship to my proposal? So I went to local jewelers, and because I knew that, you know, corporate wasn't gonna get me anywhere, and I said, listen, I got this great idea. There's approximately five thousand fans per game. I wanna propose to my girlfriend on the field at halftime. I'm really confident in this. This is, if you can give me some money off the price of this diamond, I'll put your name on the Jumbotron at halftime. And they were all into it. They loved it.
Really?
Absolutely. So we had a deal. I still, I buy all my jewelry there now. We have a great relationship. I walk in and, you know, hey, how you doing?
So you're the dummy off the street.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, that was, that was a pretty good idea. Now, you had to be pretty darn sure. I mean, I've always said those guys that do that, that takes guts.
Was that the mascot?
No, not that.
Oh, the proposal?
The proposal in front of five thousand people.
Well, you know, my uncle who flew in from California, we had a lot of family in the stands. And the ticket, the ticket department at the Wolves was, they gave away a lot of tickets that night for me. And we had, so yeah, I had the stands lined up. There was a lot of pressure.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying. I mean, at least if my wife said no when I asked, it was just me, her, and the beach, of nobody. I'm just saying, they ever say no, gosh.
And we had it on the news. We didn't even have to send out an engagement announcement. WMUR took care of it for us.
Oh, gosh. Wow, so, and she was into that?
Oh, yeah, we just, you know, she just, I think she knows with me, it's a go big or go home.
Now, did she, did she know it was coming? Did you know?
Oh, she didn't. No, here's how I know. The reason why I know that is because the very next day, I had to take her to get her nails done. And if she had known that she was gonna, you know, have a Jumbotron camera and all this attention on her hands, she would've had a manicure.
Now, since you guys have got married, it's been an addition to the family.
There has. Emmeline, yes.
And how old is she?
She's almost eighteen months.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So you're, so you're just, your whole life is just, is just on the rise.
It is, you know, it's, everything, every avenue, every change, every bend in the road is an experience, and it's a lot of fun. We make the best out of everything. You know, Emmeline was, was not our first pregnancy. We had some, we had some issues. And in fact, we were in Florida when we were pregnant with Emmeline, about, about eight or ten weeks in. And there was some complications. And we flew home the next day, you know, and we were scared. We thought, we were, you know, my wife was on bedrest for quite some time. And, you know, she's a great product of that fragile pregnancy. She came out of it, so she means the world to us. We value and respect in the life that she is because of the struggle we went through to get her here.
Okay, well, we've, the questions that I ask, again, I've given you a copy beforehand, and they're gonna be similar to a lot of the other candidates. I mean, all the candidates are getting similar questions. But, you know, human beings don't all fit into the same job. So what question might be good for one candidate isn't gonna necessarily be good for you. And so I've come to that question, so I'm gonna substitute it, and I'm gonna throw you a little bit of a curveball, okay? The question originally was, as a parent, what advice would you give to young parents just starting out? But you're a young parent just starting out, so I'm not gonna give you the pressure to tell everyone else how to raise their kids, 'cause you're just figuring it yourself. So we'll ask a fun question.
Okay. I have, I can still provide some insight onto that, but it's...
No, let's hear it, and then I'm gonna follow it up with my fun question.
So the insight, now, as you mentioned, I'm a young, young father, and I don't have the experience to be giving other, other parents advice. But I do wanna be able to say that, you know, as active as my wife Jessica and I were before the pregnancy, we were very active. And in my mind, as naive or stupid as it was, I'm thinking, well, we can still do everything we do now. We're just gonna have a kid. We'll just bring her along. And boy, was I wrong. You know, people say that it doesn't have to change your life, but it does, and it will. And that is the biggest impact, you know, having Emmeline almost eighteen months ago. And it's like, those last eighteen months have just gone by. It's like having a kid. Time goes on a rocket ship, and you really need to be ready. So for, maybe not for other parents to take any advice from me, but people who are considering being parents or having, you know, really, you need to be sure. You need to be sure. This is a major commitment, and you've gotta be in it. You gotta be in it to win it, and that's what I, that's what I have to say about that.
Okay, and again, I'll go with the fun question I started here thinking, is, let's fast-forward sixteen years. So she's seventeen, okay? She's seventeen, and you're in the big house by the bay. I mean, things have gone well for you. I mean, things have gone just fantastic.
Well, you've just fast-forwarded my life sixteen years.
Yeah, I mean, even though you own a magic studio again. Anyways, so her first boyfriend or date with a car shows up. And he shows up and he walks, walks in the house and you introduce him. Are you one of those easy guys? Are you a guy that's gonna be cleaning your gun when he walks in the door?
Well...
I bet you appreciate me doing this, bringing you to reality.
He's gonna, he's gonna have walked past at least three security cameras before he's even got into the foyer. So I may not need to be cleaning the gun, but there, but there'll be, there'll be one.
Well, again, we talked about what brought you to Merrimack, and you were, you were kinda, you didn't have a lot of choice in the matter. You were here, is where you were raised, and then you've come back because you found this was a great place for you to grow up. And I'm kinda answering it, because again, I have these questions in a row.
Well, my wife grew up in Goffstown, and she wanted to live in Goffstown. She's got a much larger family than mine, and her family was a lot closer growing up. I mean, because there were so many of them, she just saw family every holiday. And with me being from a small, a small family with no, you know, cousins and uncles and stuff weren't local, so we didn't have that type of thing. So for her, she really wanted to be in Goffstown. And it really was, you know, I really had to push and nudge and encourage and persuade her to see the added benefit of Merrimack.
So you were pitting Merrimack against Goffstown?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, I'm glad to see Merrimack won. I would expect nothing else.
Right. We, there was a lot of the same things as far as, you know, location-wise that are offered up there that we were looking for. But, you know, Merrimack is just, it had the right package, it had the right contents in the right order for me, as far as that goes.
And it had a fifteen to twenty-minute drive between your in-laws and you.
Oh, yeah.
Something to be said for that.
Well, where we're located in Merrimack, my mother's on the south end, and I'm on the north end. And then, so we're right in the middle, and that was a good selling point. We're not, we're not any closer to my mom than we are yours, I think.
There you go. Again, we talked a little bit about sports earlier, and you were saying you really weren't into sports in high school and that. But what type of hobbies do you enjoy now as a, as a grown-up?
Well, so, you know, I like to just, to be involved in a lot of things. So anytime I can get involved, and one of the reasons that led me to become a mascot, let me just back up a little bit to that, is due to that. You know, my wife joined the dance team of this arena football team way before I knew anything about the mascot. And just my, the way that I wanna do things, I don't wanna sit in an audience and watch. I wanna be part of the show, be part of the production anyway, and make it happen. So I was talking to front office and asked for things to do, and, you know, they had suggested, you know, we need a mascot. Oh, no. What else to do? And I tried the mascot and I liked it. But, but that being said, I do, I like to have a hand in things, and I like to play a role.
So you'd rather be doing, not watching?
Absolutely. And that's really, those are my hobbies. You know, as a homeowner now, my hobbies, I love mowing the lawn. I love doing the chores, you know, I like, I love doing that. We bought a home that was foreclosed on. And so it needs a lot of work, and over the years, we're doing the work, and that's, I enjoy that. Those are my hobbies, is renovating and repairing.
Twenty years from now, we'll touch base, and we'll see how that lawn mowing's doing for you. Saturdays. Give me, give me the Saturday in the life of Kevin Shay and his young family.
Well, so the young family part has made the sleeping in and taken that out of the equation. So we're up early, and my wife gets the baby ready, and I get the trash going, and I take a ride to the dump. And then, you know, this time of year, there's not a whole lot I can do outside, so I'll start inside right away. And, but usually, you know, summertime, I'll do the yard work and some of the landscaping and get the chores out of the way. Maybe tackle a small project, and then Saturday afternoons and evenings, we try to do something family, some family event. We usually look around and see what's going on, any expos or fairs or any events, and we try to do something as a family.
And how about Sundays?
Sundays, well, my wife just changed jobs, but she was working Sundays, so Sundays is daddy duty. You know, I mean, Daddy Daughter Day, and we'd, you know, so...
So she's at the, she's at the age, she's turning into a little person every day.
She calls the shots.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And somehow, when my wife leaves, she asks for all the things that my wife tells her she can't have. And I don't know this until later on, until one time my daughter asked me for something when my wife's home, and I go to get it, and my, what are you doing? She can't have that.
What is it, like a bowl of Twinkies and ice cream?
Oh, this is the frosted cookies that she has, and she knows exactly where they are. My wife can, she's moved them three times. I don't know where they are. My daughter knows. So, you know, I get home and the excitement of daddy, daddy, she picked me up. So I pick her up, and as soon as I pick her up, the arm goes out. And then as I move, the arm's like a compass. It takes me to wherever she needs to go.
I'll tell you, the first part of this, I really enjoyed. I really feel like I know you. And again, we, we actually, we met, don't expect you to remember, but we met, you know, a few years ago when you showed up, you were blitzed.
Right.
So we met for about eight seconds inside one of the locker rooms that I'm doing the Fall Festival. But, you know, we never met since then, and like I say, I feel I've gotten to know you a little better, and I hope the people at home have. What we're gonna do now is something that I'm hoping is a little fun again. It's a way to learn more, and it's, we're looking for one or two-word answers. They're basically some quick questions. And if you wanna expound a little bit, by all means, feel free, but don't feel that you need to either. But, and I may expound on it depending what the answer is.
Certainly.
Okay. Your first car?
An Oldsmobile Delta eighty-eight.
What year was it?
It was a nineteen eighty-six. We named it Merlin.
What were you getting, like eight miles to get it?
Oh, I don't know. It only lasted me a year.
And the present car?
An F-150.
And is that, does that have room for the three of you, or do you all take the wife's car when you go out?
So the wife has a minivan. That's the baby mobile command center.
Yeah.
And, but, yeah, the truck has the extended cab, so that...
So you're doing good. You haven't wiped out too much, then. You've got some of the Delta eighty-eight. You still got a truck, so you're doing alright. Okay, favorite TV show growing up?
Growing up, you know what? I liked Sledgehammer. I don't know if you remember, it was the, the wacky cop with the printed suits, and he always had that forty-four Magnum with a painted handle on it.
Really?
Sledgehammer was his, yeah. I got an autographed picture sent to me.
Now, was it a cartoon or a...
No, no, it was a live show. The actor's name was David Rashk. I think he was in a couple of other things.
Oh, wow.
But, yeah, I was a big fan. I wrote to ABC and got a...
Well, I officially feel very, very old. I'm hoping I'm gonna understand this now. I realize...
It was Dukes of Hazzard was all part of that era.
Yeah, okay.
Dukes of Hazzard, and Street Hawk was another one that was kind of...
Yeah, no, I know what I'll be doing on Google when I get home tonight. Favorite TV show now?
We like Last Man Standing, Tim Allen's new show.
Oh, really? I've watched that one or two times. He's done good with that, huh?
Yeah, you know, it's a lot, there's a lot of parallels to his Home Improvement series. Same idea.
Favorite movie ever?
National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation.
Oh, yeah.
Chevy Chase. I, that doesn't get old. You know, we watch it actually a couple times a year now, during holidays.
My favorite movie is also a National Lampoon one is Animal House.
Oh, I don't know if I've seen that one.
Oh, I love, that's a movie with John Belushi and all that. You, again, you're, it's seven, and you're a lot younger than me. 'Cause if you were close to my age, you would. See, that was the movie back then. Last movie you and your wife saw?
Um, you know, it's been a long time. I actually had to ask her about this because I didn't remember, you know, what movie we saw. And it was Jim Carrey's Christmas Story, Christmas Carol, the Charles Dickens one with Jim Carrey. We saw that in the theater.
'Cause you realize for the next seven or eight years, anytime I ask that question, the answer will be a Disney movie.
Yeah.
First job?
Market Basket. I was a grocery bagger.
Do you learn some, they say everything you need to know in life, you can learn in kindergarten, and they also say that about bagging groceries.
That was one of the, Market Basket's one of the best companies to instill a good work ethic in somebody. You know, I was making minimum wage, bagging groceries and shagging carriages in the parking lot. My friends were, you know, taking the easy life with mall jobs and, you know, making a lot more. And in Market Basket, you know, anybody that I've ever met that's worked there, I gotta say that they've got a good work ethic.
I remember when I was in college, there was a book I read, and I've always... I remember when I was in college, there was, um, a book I read and I, I've always remembered this little part in it, cause I, I found it very intriguing. The guy was talking about a, a study he did of going to the store and watching kids bag. And that he could tell how successful that kid was gonna be in life by how he bagged. That there were a few different types, there was the one that just figured, hey, that isn't gonna get any quicker to me than, than it can go. If I don't bag it, they'll just have to stop the conveyor.
Oh, yeah.
Then there's the guy that can't get there quick enough.
Absolutely.
And then there's the guy that's just kinda there, but he said you can, you take a fifteen year old kid and I'll tell you what work ethic he has and. And when you go to a store, you see that every day, I mean, and I'm looking for it because I always remember the equation. Uh, your current job, we haven't quite gotten to that.
I'm a technical trainer for a company that does in-building wireless, uh, systems. So we do, you know, with schools and hospitals and any, any sort of a corporate building, any building for that matter, where your wireless, wireless devices don't work. My company, uh, there's two parts of the company, there's a product division and the service division. We manufacture products that help make cell phones work and we install and service those and, and I've, uh, I started as an installer and worked my way through and now I'm a technical trainer.
So you're training them on, in the field? Would that be a correct statement?
A little bit of both, we, I, we're in developmental training as far as e-learning, we do e-learning, we do training, um, webinars and PowerPoint presentations. And, and yes, we, we will take it out into the field and, and on occasion, we have so far, this is a, a new initiative that, uh, we, we've developed. We've identified a need on a national level, um, that our technical partners and, and installers out there need, need some technical guidance and. And so I've been tasked to bring it to them.
Okay, uh, favorite musical artist growing up?
You know, this is an embarrassing one, but I'm, but I'm not gonna lie to you, Michael Bolton.
Really?
And, and I don't know if my friends would ever tell you that because they probably didn't know it, but my mother and my sister.
They may not be your friends after this episode is.
Oh, I know, right? You know, you win something, I, I just, I don't wanna lie about it.
Oh, no.
So, so I had Michael Bolton's CD and I would blast it, the, the music and I'd pretend, and my, my mother was dating a singer. And he's like, how can you listen to that? That guy's voice makes my throat hurt, he says. But, uh, that was, yeah, yeah, it's embarrassing.
Now, let's, let's see how far you've come. Your favorite musical artist now?
Oh, you know, I listen to a variety of things, I think, you know, uh, you go to the iTunes and I think I've got, uh, Dotree and, and Nickelback and, and, uh, and that kinda stuff going on there now. I like Rob Thomas.
So a little bit, I like the oldies at all?
No.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck in nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
If they've made a, if they've made a song since nineteen eighty, uh, no one's told me about it yet.
Yeah, they, you know, and, and I like some of the top forty stuff, you know, a lot of the dance mixes, because my wife was, uh, was a dancer for so long. Uh, that's just, you know, I, I, I really get fired up, I hear that stuff and I, and I start. So, uh, yeah, tha- that kinda, I do like that kinda music.
Did you get to keep the, the Blitz?
I did, I did. I did, the, the team, well, the league folded.
Right.
And, and when, and when the league kinda redeveloped, the, the closest team was like Chicago at the time. And we weren't developed to be a, a, a flight league, we, we could, it wasn't in the budget, you know, it was, we wanted to bust the guys to the games and. And, and if we had joined the league at the time, we would be flying everywhere. So the ownership group, uh, was kind enough to say, you know, you, I've dedicated six years of. Of, uh, my life to, to doing this and, and, you know, pretty much every weekend, um, I was doing some sort of a different charity or promotion for the team. Um, so they get, so they gave me the suit, in, in addition to the inflatable tunnel that the players run through.
Oh, really?
So, if you're driving by my house on one of my daughter's birthday or her, the baby shower, you would've seen the wolf with pink balloons. Which my wife discourages every time, but I always get it in there.
So you've got all kinds of gadgets for the Smirramack Fall Festival X balls?
Good thing I've got the F-one fifty, right?
There you go.
Truck to load it up over there.
Favorite athlete growing up?
Danny Ainge. Danny Ainge came to, uh, to MVP Sports, if you remember that, he was, he was always there, so. So he signed my basketball and, uh, and he was my favorite. I don't have that basketball anymore.
Uh, favorite athlete now?
Tom Brady.
Can't go wrong with Brady.
No, I love Tom Brady.
And, uh, we're coming to a closure here on the lightning round. I'm not sure this, if this was, uh, this was kinda more like a slow-moving storm.
We didn't really, it wasn't as.
That's alright, it was more fun that way. I told you, this is the first, and people have been trying to shut me up for ten years, so that ain't gonna happen. Uh, favorite book that you read?
Uh, favorite book? You know what, probably one of, uh, growing up would've been, uh, the Mark Wilson Course of Magic. It wasn't really a novel book, but it was a book, it was probably my favorite, yeah.
And the last book you've read?
Uh, my big animal book, I think it was my daughter's.
I knew that was, I was willing to put money on that one.
Yeah, it was, uh, yeah, the, the ones with the pictures and, you know, you point and, uh, what does a lion say?
Well, as we're getting, I won't say we're ready to close it, but we're beginning to knock on the door.
Okay.
Like to talk a little bit about the future and, uh, like to have you say a little bit about. A, your personal goals, but at the same time, if you could, uh, wrap it into your bucket list.
Okay.
Things that you hope to do before it's all said and done.
Well, I think I can wrap it up in, into that really well because I think that, I, I think I'm doing my bucket list as I go, you know, um, I, I, I'm one that. That seizes an opportunity as I see it. And, and so that, the need to write something down hasn't really occurred because I've, I accomplished it as I wanted when I was young. Uh, when I, when I was young, you know, magic was one of my first things I really liked and I'd set out to meet David Copperfield. And when I was fourteen, I met him. And, uh, and then, you know, so it just, it just was taught to me very young that. If, if you just, if you wanna do something, that, what's stopping you, just do it. So I've done things, you know, I've seized the opportunity, uh, to become a mascot. To, 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 to put myself in positions, you know, to do, to do magic on the grand scale. Um, the, the opportunity to, uh, run for a public office, the, these things that would be a bucket list, I'm gonna check them off as I go. So that's kind of where, um, where I go and, and.
So you're saying there isn't as much a master plan as there is that, as it feels good, do it?
There's, there's a basis to the master plan, there's always, so I, I always fight hard and, and work for what I believe in, I've got the strong values and a foundation that. There's, there is sort of an end goal, um, and, and that, that changed when I had my daughter. Um, because, you know, more, you know, I would've, I would've told you a few years ago that I would've loved to, to jump out of a plane. And, and I'm not, I'm not afraid for myself anymore, but more or less my daughter now, that, you know, so I don't know if I would say that same thing now.
Yeah.
Um.
How about traveling? Any countries you'd like to go to?
Love to travel, you know, I'd love to go to Ireland. Um, Ireland's something that's interesting, I'm not sure. I didn't really do too good in the foreign language department, so I don't know if I wanna go anyplace just yet that doesn't speak English, but, um. But Ireland's, Ireland seems like a lot of fun. Mexico, I, I don't think I'd make it, the, the, I don't know if there's enough sunblock to keep me in Mexico for any sort of period of time. But, uh, yeah, Europe's good, Europe's something I wanna see.
Where do you hope to retire?
You know, I think someplace, I, I wanna stay, um, not too far from, from where it's happening. But just far enough that nobody's gonna bother me on a daily basis. You know, I wanna see, excuse me, I wanna see retirement. As, as just a way to, to, um, to relax and enjoy my time. And, uh, depending on, on how much my family grows and where they end up, it's really gonna dictate, um, where I end up. Yeah, if so, you know, it's, uh, the, the location to be determined.
Okay, and, and we'll segue into where you end up because in the end, we know where we all end up.
That's right.
When it's all said and done, and you're over, raised or wherever else and they've, they've done their thing and planted you in the ground or. Or spread you over the nattercock, whatever they do. And people are having their, uh, cold cuts and a couple of beers. And they're talking about old Kev. How would you like to be remembered? When it's all said and done, how would you like people to think of your time on this earth?
I wanna be remembered as, as a good husband, a good father, somebody who made a difference and somebody who fought for what he believed in. Because, uh, you know, people who know me know that, that, uh, where there, where there's a, a will, there's a way and I, and I. And I usually am very determined to get, uh, to get what I need and it's always in the best interest of others. You know, there's, uh, there's a lot of, I make a lot of selfish decisions, uh, unfortunately, those selfish decisions are the same selfish decisions that benefit other people. So, you know, um, it's, it's always in the best interest of others and it's somebody who, who, like I said, yeah, fought for what he wanted. And, and just was, was an overall, made an impact on, on the positive side.
Great. Well, I'll tell you, I really enjoyed our time today and, um, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't, I don't think of anything that, uh, that, that comes to mind at, now, no. I, I enjoy, uh, I enjoy living in Merrimack and, um, I, I'm glad I came back.
Well, great, well, again, uh, we'll be bringing each candidate above, about and, uh, your names will be on the ballot. On, uh, April tenth, and I'm sure between now and then, your people will see you on TV and. See your candidate tonight and they'll get a feel a little more for the political side of you, but again, today, our job was to get people to meet Kevin Shay.
That's right.
I like to think we did alright.
I ho- I hope so.
Alright, well, Kevin, thank you very much and good luck on April tenth.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye. And I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time to tune in. And again, between now and the election. We will have different candidates on next week, um, I believe it's gonna be Tom Mahon and, um. I could be wrong here, but I think it's Mike Melzone. And in fact, I take that back. Um, and the way we're running it is we're doing separate shows, but we're airing two shows per weekend. So actually, uh, Kevin's show and, uh, Kevin will be airing the same time, uh, Tom Mahon does, so you'll be seeing Kevin and Tom during that week. But thank you very, very much and, uh, till next time.